Thank you.
Recording in progress.
Good boy. That's better. All right, the Situette School Committee is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minority communities, to feel welcome and respected. We ask our committee members and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. Call the meeting to order at 6:01 here on March 10th, 2025, and we will start with public comments. Seeing none. And our student report, I'm not seeing our students present tonight. All right, we'll go to our leadership report with superintendent Burkett.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone. I've got the pleasure tonight to introduce someone who must have seen us all here, no one of our community knows our lead on the dorm unit here and Situette resident to come and speak to us, Don Walter, and begin a little presentation periodically. We've done this to keep the school committee apprised of our progress, but also the community. And as Don takes his way up, I'll just steal his highlights and then you can do all the other stuff. But the best two things you'd like to hear on a school project is that it's on time and on or under budget, which it's in a very healthy place on both those fronts. Don will share a little bit more detail of that, but I think that's obviously most important without giving anything up or cutting anything. So a lot of really good news coming out of tonight, I believe. We have the opportunity to vote on some things as well, but Don gave the details on that. Also want to, we had a working group meeting today and, you know, the excitement about, you know, actually breaking ground this fall and talking about setting a date for the groundbreaking, which is a real fun, exciting milestone that we'll be doing early fall. So a lot happening there, things will start happening fast and furious, obviously, over the summer when that break ground in the fall. So, and also the enrollment plan or the redistricting, if you will, or calling it our enrollment plan is underway. Partnered up with Cropper GS Consulting Group, which we've used in the past, it was used by many, many schools, very experienced in this. They're in the data collection phase right now, just collecting our enrollment numbers, geographic locations, all the building specs, they'll be doing that through July. And then over the summer, we'll be forming committee of stakeholders to be part of oversight of that. And as we head into the fall, there'll be a website that'll be up with all the information. There'll be public meetings, there'll be a very community-involved process like the school was on a micro level, where we'll get a lot of input on those initial feedback. Good news about this and what we like about meeting with Cropper is that there'll be a lot of good information that people can use to make informed decisions and feedback, and it'll be in real time, so we'll be updating that as we get the information so that when decisions are made, people will be very much in the know on the what and why behind any decisions we have to make, and they'll have input on those with the goal of next January of '26 with the school committee vote. That will give us 18 months on the other end to prepare busing for parents and caregivers to prepare, and which is a nice healthy timeline over the year to prepare for that, so it's not a rush. So I just wanted to make sure that people were clear on that. If people are asking, we did have an early fall meeting just to get initial feedback and that we're in good shape with that. In one of the upcoming Thursday thoughts, I'll do a summary of this for the community as well as an email blast, how just so it's on their, the plan and the outline of the timeline is on their minds as they head into the summer months.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
You might not know this, but I was just curious if you do know how the data collection happens for students that are not yet enrolled in SPS? Like, do they at any point survey families about younger siblings, or do they talk to local preschools? I was just curious how they do that, if you know.
Don, do you remember if they generate that from?
I don't, I suppose I can talk to Mr. Walter.
Yeah, I'll have to ask on that. He did have a method.
Yeah.
He said we have a method with the clerk's office and births and hospitals and things like that. It's pretty involved, but I didn't recall if he had surveys going out.
I was just curious, because I think that is a question that we might get, so.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
The one we need to know.
Yeah.
Questions, probably turn it over to Mr. Walter.
Done, great. Thank you, Bill. Hey, everyone. It's been a little while since we've been back here. A lot is taking place, as you can imagine. We're here in March, and we'll be breaking ground sometime in September, October of this year. So a lot of detailing has been happening over these last few months and weeks, and that'll continue through June. But we can go ahead and click to the next image. Basically, we can talk off schedule, give you a snapshot as to where we are and where we're going. I'll let you know where we are with the Conservation Commission and Planning Board, which we are permitting. Bill alluded to our most recent cost estimates, the results of that. And then really, the meat of the meeting has to do with these proprietary items, but I think the work that's taken place over the last nine months, six months, I guess, since last September with the working group in the school building committee, getting to a point to where we are presenting you tonight. You'll appreciate all that work that's taken place and hopefully agree with their recommendations. So looking at the schedule, the famous red dash line is where we are today. We did go through the 60% cost estimates with our estimator and VerTEX's estimator, and it's continued to be good news moving forward. What we're doing is that 60% will be submitted to, and we submit it to MSBA, we'll be submitting to MSBA again at the 90% with two more estimates, and then out to bid end of June, beginning of July, which is about a two-month process, which will bring us into the fall for construction. And then as the construction winds throughout, we see the building completion is about 18 months. But after that, we'll come demolition of the existing building, its site work, and then move in for a fall '27 occupancy, with some continued work after that with remaining site work, and then the demolition and the field metal and over there, cushion. So that's our schedule right now. And then in terms of permitting, as I mentioned, we've been going to Conservation Commission and Planning Board. Prior to these meetings, we spent quite a bit of time meeting with leadership from administrators from both of these groups. They've been a great help in bringing us down the right path for hopefully getting conclusion and approval, which we don't see as being an issue. But you can see with Conservation, they're most concerned with wetlands and buffers and how we address those, the upper, if you call it, the upper left-hand corner of the site plan and the lower left-hand corner of the site plan are where the two wetlands exist on the site. So we're working, excuse me, with that and the buffers to make the site very viable. They've been very interested in the stormwater design and site planting, although stormwater design is actually permitted through the Planning Board, but we do still share that information with ComCom. And then the landscape plantings and tree conservation, very interested in. Recall, perhaps, there's quite a bit of buffer around the perimeter of the site to the, actually to all three sides leading down to the street and behind the houses on Anvino. But there are some more mature trees which are considered invasive, but they're very viable, help to create the buffer. So we, they like the idea of keeping those trees and not just removing them because they're invasive, but to plant some undergrowth buffer too, to enhance the buffer from the neighbors. So that's something that we talked about. And with all that initial discussion, which was on the 10th of February, it was continued to March 17th. So that's our next meeting for that. With Planning Board, you can see the primary issues, you mentioned them on the 13th, protection of the adjoining properties. We've done our noise studies, we've looked, we've done our mitigation as part of this most recent 60% review, meeting the town zoning requirements. The site and civil, that's a lot of discussion as it relates to roadways and circulation as well as the stormwater. Actually, there was some great dialogue back and forth about making some tweaks at the turn when you come down before you get out to Anvino Road and up around the service loading area or left side of the site. So great dialogue about that. We made some revisions and we resubmitted that to Planning Board, obviously, public health and welfare and water resources. So that was, is considered to March 27th. So we see that trending in a very good fashion also. Mentioned the costs, we continue to be on budget, everything is accounted for. We have sewer force made in Anvino, stormwater, site design features, meeting the Optin Stretch Energy Code compliance, which is something, as a green community, that we've adopted and had more, even more energy-efficient measures within the building. And then the cushion, cushion abatement demolition, everything is within that budget. And here you can see some of the detail from the schematic design budget, that's what we submitted to MSBA, that's what the town voted on, right? So that's something that we do not want to exceed, we'll go back to town. But as we promised back then, we would work to try to continue to bring across town, especially without sacrificing any of the quality or educational experience within the building, your community experiences on the site. So you can see at design development, we're able to see about $2.8 million in savings or about 3% there, I believe. And then at the CD reconciled estimate, another seven and a half, 7.6 million. So total savings, about 8% of our schematic design. I always come to caution, because as we know, the discussion about tariffs and how tariffs may impact the project, to date, it is unknown. So it's hard for an estimator to include costs within that estimate right now, because we just don't know what they may be, if they'll even be there. But that's why we're cautiously optimistic. And as mentioned, as we continued before, we'll look for ways to save money. But if you go to the next slide, you know, how did, or why did the cost change? And even from DD to the 60% CD, there were some scope change. So you can see there was some added detail with the site work, stormwater in particular. Because of the way the project is phased and with the school building still being on the site before the students move in, obviously, we looked for ways to strategically locate stormwater, underground stormwater basements without impacting the existing building or elongating the construction schedule. So we're actually putting a lot of that into courtyards. So it became a nice opportunity to put some of the underground stormwater within the courtyards of the building. We worked with that, but that was an added cost to the project moving forward. And then some of the detail with the foundations was updated, because we have to bring in quite a bit of fill, because the level of the current fill-in refill versus the level of the existing hatter lead and balancing the site. So that was worked out. There was just, which is very typical when you're, as you go through details, you start to understand more about the building and how it's going to be constructed, so there's some more increases there, just normal things as you go through the process. Some of the decreases that we saw in the budget, you can see market corrections in steel windows and roofing, but we saw the biggest correction had to do with your mechanical and architect systems. So it's something we're seeing across the market in Massachusetts, so that helped to realize some of the savings. And then as we get into more detail, you can see the design and estimating contingency, which is something that we started up at 12% way back in schematic design, and it worked its way down, it'll zero out when we get to basically 90%, because everything will be captured with the drawing. You can see that was reduced down to 3%. And same thing with escalation, that's how we measure when the building's going to be bid and start construction. So obviously, the further out you are, the higher the escalation is, that number gets smaller as you get closer to bid dates. You can see we're down to, down to 1% now. So that's where we are with the cost. In terms of updates on the site plan, we continue to work with the fire and the police departments as it relates to the emergency circulation. And we actually were able to increase some parking on the site, really, it's that parking. And if you can see in the lower left corner, that green bar next to the bus loop, and the same thing up to the top, and the same thing over to the right, we're actually able to gain about 29 additional spaces, and it's in what's called a, it's physically a grass pavement, it's structural grass turf, which allows people to park on it. And we have the same situation out in front of Gates, between Gates and Anvino Pond for fire, emergency vehicle apparatus. So if there ever was an issue and, you know, our job right is to get out there, we're not sinking to the ground with this structural turf below that. So we're able to go through and get that worked out and increase the overall parking space from 147 pay spaces up to 176.
I was just curious, like, I'm having trouble imagining 176 parking spaces. What has 100, what has something, what's comparable that we have currently? Like, is the parking lot at Gates? How many butts is that? Or like, the current elementary schools? Do you have any idea? I just can't imagine.
This is certainly larger than, say, the other elementary schools are. It might be comparable to Gates. We can certainly get you the number.
I was just curious.
I just don't know off the top of my head.
Yeah, it sounds like a lot.
Yeah.
Honestly. So I was just thinking, like, just trying to imagine, thinking about community functions and events and things like that, you know?
We think it's a lot, too.
Yeah, okay.
But you want to try to maximize your parking, because there's always those events where you're gonna say, gosh, we wish we had more parking. And we think we're capturing that, obviously, we want to keep it off the road. And it's a whole circulation pattern with the blue line coming in and around, circulating back up, being able to get so many cars off the road, so we're not queuing on Anvino. So, yeah, I can meet you there. That's the site plan. Floor plans, really haven't been any updates. We're going through the detail, we're talking about some of the security and safety measures, which we'll talk about in some of the proprietary items here. But the basic building layout has stayed the same, kindergarten, pre-K, the lower level on the left, first grade, second grade above them, and third grade and the second level over to the right, and then fourth and fifth grade to the right on the ground level. And all of the shared four facilities and after-hours usage in the middle, the cafeteria, the gymnasium, the art, the music, the library, media center, and of course, the administration, the light blue color right there next to the main entrance. The ground floor, second floor. So I don't know if there's any questions about any of that.
I just have a question with the ILC and the PLC.
What about that?
The ILC and the PLC, where will they be in the building?
So I don't know the specific locations, but all of the pink spaces that you see within the building, on both the second floor, if you go back down to the first floor, those are all your special education spaces spread throughout the building?
Because now, is it, is it the location at that, is that feasible? Is that feasible to have it spread out?
No, it won't be. I believe it's on the second floor right now, above the pre-K. There's still flexibility within that right now, I'm still working that out.
So you're interested in locations?
Yeah, like other people would be, too.
Okay. I know we've discussed it before, I just don't know exactly where it is.
And it'd be on the second floor.
Related to that question, are teachers still involved in the kind of like planning and the layout of the space? Because I think that might also be related to Janice's question, is just how are we making sure that, you know, what they know is going to be needed is taken into account?
Absolutely. We spent quite a bit of time with staff, all varieties of staff, and whatever we learn there, we bring back to the working group and have those discussions and those decisions that may be made based upon staff and teacher and work that's been brought to the SPC. So it's a pretty detailed process throughout.
I just want to follow the next, because that was pretty recent. And when I moved to Montomoy as principal, teachers absolutely loved it for practicality, because it's one thing on drawings, but then when you live it. So I think that's where some districts go wrong, they don't have any community air step, at least this late in the process. We had the visioning, visioning meetings, they were so long ago. Now we have a pretty, pretty good, strong draft here, and then teachers came in over multiple days by groups and spent a lot of time with the most current plans you see in front of you and got into a lot of detail, about sound, sound barriers in the gym, storage, soup to nuts. So, yeah, I want to make that clear, that that's very important, because that's huge in the outcome, and we learned a lot from that. So I want to give DNW credit for, again, spending that amount of time with all the teachers, having the opportunity for each discipline, everyone was represented, they all came in, the volunteers were, credit to our teachers, were overwhelming, so plenty of people getting feedback. So that did happen, it did happen very recently.
And we show you these plans, which don't have your furniture laid out, but we actually do dwell plants. We bring them in, we sit down, we walk about, we walk through where all the casework is, where the furniture might be. Of course, flexibility is in there, so furniture can be moved around. But also, all the materials that are in there, we go through, we develop, we call room data sheets, so all the outlets are identified and the switches and everything like that. So there's quite a bit of detail that's put into that. So we make sure that they're meeting their expectations and their needs, and we need to be able to get that information to our engineers, so they can build that up in the document, so it can be controlled. Okay? So proprietary specifications. And I know there was a lot of homework that was sent out to the group. And basically, this is a public process, a public bidding process. And Massachusetts has its own public bidding procedures. What we are required to do is provide at least three of everything that goes into a building, so three manufacturers of mechanical equipment, three manufacturers of flooring types, three manufacturers of brick, things of that nature, throughout the whole building. With some items, you just can't find three manufacturers. It's either because the product is so new that other companies haven't caught up to it yet, it's because they have a, that company made a proprietary method of building it, and you see that in the flooring or constructing it, that no one else can beat. Sometimes it's meeting either what your public safety may be requesting in terms of the NOx boxes that we'll talk about, or technology and security as it relates to the school department and how the school department functions with other schools, or door hardware. So what we have done, we have gone through since last September and developed this list. Should tell you that we have in-house specifications people, so we're, it's not like we have a consultant, we talked about it, it's a constant discussion back and forth, because we're always trying to find, first of all, we like to find three, if we can, but if you just can't, we need to be able to justify using it in the building and obviously having a vote taken on that. So we've gone through with the working group, we've gone through the SBC. Ultimately, on the 12th of February, the SBC did vote to recommend the 11 items that go through tonight with a vote of the school committee as the awarding authority. With minutes published, there's, will be something here that will send them saying yes to call the sign. So and then we'll, MSBA know our 90% submission, which is on or about the month of April. So I'll try to be brief with these. I can go into detail if you'd like, but I'll start brief, and we can always go back and go through questions. So the first item that you see up here is what's called phone glass. It's actually a compressive strength insulation that sits on top of a steel angle that can support brick. So what's important about that, it's generally up at roof levels, up at high areas within the building. And the reason it's a highly compressive, has a high compressive strength insulation is that it creates a break between the outside and the inside, because your steel angle is a great conductor of thermal transmission from cold on the outside to warm on the inside. So this helps to break that, but it can also support the brick. As you can see, there's only one product that can do that. So we recommend that. And with the way the energy code is now, we need to put this in to meet the termination code. So that's the thermal insulation. Next one, this is easy, this is door hardware, similar to Gates. So this is just keeping up keying placement hardware, things of that nature, for what the school district currently has. Next item is laminated safety glass or school guard. This is an intrusion-resistant glass. So this is important if someone's trying to break into the building, they come up to the high school area, throw a rock at the window, and you're in. This is a laminated safety glass. It's true of all your windows.
Nothing else.
Nobody wants to, they're not breaking in. So what this does is, well, it doesn't, it can't keep someone completely out, it delays it in such a way, it allows for emergency responders to come, or they get frazzled and they walk away. So that's school guard. This is really the best product, it's certainly the product that's like them, so we recommend that. The translucent glazing units, Ocalux, this is something we use for the high glazing in the gymnasium. So it's a, basically, when you look through one of your clear glass, this is a frosted glass or a translucent glass, so you can't see through it, you can't see the sky, but you get the lighting. And what it does is it diffuses the light as it comes in, so you get, you don't get any glare, sun coming in and lighting someone playing volleyball, basketball or something else within the gymnasium. So that's Ocalux, they're the only ones. The gypsum tiled backer board, there are two manufacturers for that, and this is important, because these are the only two that are mildew resistant. So you can imagine in a wet atmosphere, if you introduce heat, especially in the winter, mildew could start, this is mildew resistant, so that will avoid that from occurring with that backer. And that's a backer, a tiled backer. The next item is flexible gypsum wallboard, so two manufacturers for that. We actually just have this located in the media center over the circulation desk. We do have high curve soffit, and most drywall will work, it's a gentle soffit, but it's a sharp enough curve to it, tight enough radius that, this is required, excuse me, two manufacturers for that. The flocked flooring, Flotex, this is, this is an awesome flooring system, which is made particularly for pre-K and kindergarten students. As you can see, it's water, it's stain resistant, it's also comfortable to sit on, almost carpet-like, but it has a backing sub step, water's not going to penetrate through and create an issue down the road, and it's easily cleaned. So that's something that we're using in the pre-K classrooms. Fire protection specialties, this is the NOx box that I mentioned earlier on, basically for fire department keys. They come to the building, they want to be able to get in, they have a key, they open the NOx box. And then electric vehicle charging stations, a charge point, this is something that the town is going through, where they're going to have these particular stations throughout public spaces. So we want to keep up with the rest of the town's doing with vehicle charging stations. Communications equipment, so basically, these are meeting the district standards for the network switches, ruckus networks, voice over IP, and the distributed communication. So this is keeping up with everything that you're doing now. And then lastly, similar to the communications, you're building security systems, your door access controls and video surveillance, so that'll be something that'll be the same as the rest of the building. So that'll be something that'll be the same as the rest of the district. So there are 11 items up there. We did go through this, as I mentioned, with the working group, school building committee. We had a favorable vote on that. Happy to answer any questions or take a vote?
Just to confirm the proprietary, so these are obviously special type items. In the committee's review of it, kind of what, what did they consider? Is it this was really proprietary goods and there's nothing else to substitute for them? And they were okay with that solution? What about, like, what is the entire, is there a way to give an entire cost of all of these items for the minimal?
Not sitting here today, but I can tell you that everything is within the budget that we posted so far. So in, in terms of the dialogue, we, we try to find three items if we can. Obviously, if there's, if there's a district or a town request, we want to work within those parameters. But the other items that you saw up there, some of them, there were two, two isn't counting, at least three. So we do quite a detailed vetting of that even before we present it to the working group. I don't know if.
And you said you have, you have folks in your, oh, this name works. You have folks in your office, in your office that this is kind of what they do, their focus is on?
They, they are full-time specifications writers. We have two of them. And what they do is try to get it all right. And when we go through, kind of batting it back and forth between them and Tom Engelsberg, our project manager and our project architect, is just see what the best way is to proceed with these items. I will say that the items that you see up here are not unique to Situate. We're using similar items in all other schools that we're doing too. And we're not the only architects doing that. Anyone who, for instance, did that progressive insulation for the brick, that's it. So that's another architecture builders are using also. So.
Thank you.
The same thing with that flooring is like a unique item that wasn't really comparable in any other product. With the durability, the way to sort of interchange it, comes in these little squares. It was sort of not, there was just nothing out there that met that same level of.
So you guys don't, and this is just like crazy question, but you guys don't have like salespeople coming to your office saying, hey, you should be using this particular product? Like you don't have incentives or your firm doesn't have?
I mean, there, there are people who are not going to go in.
Yeah.
Just as they do with our engineers, just because they do it as a people who don't accept that. I, I will say that we, if, in this case, looking at the Flotex was terrible. We have carpeted in other areas, but given the nature of the youngest students within the building and propensity for spills, this seemed to make a lot of sense. A lot, there's a lot of floor activity, so this Flotex made a lot of sense for that.
If I could add to that, that keep in mind that the school building committee's surprised that a lot of trades, folks, lawyers, I think they all had good questions on all these, they weren't surprised by it. So to answer your question, it was a very indefinite conversation throughout the meeting. The entire group, I believe it was unanimous, felt very comfortable with this number not being uncommon, not being too high, already built into the package. And things that would help the project. For all those reasons, it was voted approved, or it did take a while to talk through each item. And they, they knew what these things are better than some of us do.
I mean, we got to see that flooring, so that was.
I learned a lot.
Your one to wrap our brains around.
Learned a lot. Do you expect to be more proprietary items to come? This is it?
This is it. That's why we wait this long, because we want to make sure there's nothing else coming. With the caveat, if something does come out, we don't expect it.
I think also like it's, it's all within the budget. It's not like asking for any shifting or changing in any way.
But nothing was sacrificed to meet the.
And some of the things are just, you know, things that we're using throughout the town to make it easier.
Yeah, the hardware piece.
Possible extra depending on.
This is also very similar list to the other two projects I've done, especially around the technology, the security, the doors. It's a pretty similar proprietary list because it has to match the rest of the district.
My only other question was relevant, to follow up on Janice's ILC PLC. I'm assuming that the special ed teachers maybe provided a recommendation. This is very generic, but I would guess that ILC PLC might be preferable on the first floor.
Yeah.
For accessibility purposes. And I'm assuming that you've received that feedback already, if that's accurate. I don't know, I don't know if that's accurate or not, but I just thought maybe that they might have provided that commentary.
I would think so. Mobile chairs and things like that, yes, there would be an elevator, but that's just a pain, you know?
Yeah, in emergency, in emergencies. I just, I just want, I'm sure that it will work itself out, but I just wanted to follow up on that.
Yeah, I think that's important.
Dr. Bo is involved in all those. So we're looking to vote this proprietary list, sort of just as one item, one sort of slate of items. That would be, that would be the recommended motion there.
So you might want to just read that, whoever's making the motion?
Oh, not just that.
Got it.
So just read that? The school committee, the awarding authority for the Situate Hathaway Elementary School project hereby finds and determines after discussion with door and wittier architects, the project designer, and after D W's reasonable investigation of other feasible alternatives as reviewed by the owner procurement official. That it is in the best interest of the owner and the public at large to have certain portions of the work as detailed in this presentation be included in the specifications for this project as a proprietary specification and not provide for or equal substitutions.
Like I said, is that a motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
That covers all.
Covers all, yeah, great. Thank you so much, Sean.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, just kidding.
Do you have another?
I do.
Do you mind, Dr. Rab, if we?
Not at all.
Okay, I'm happy to, um, I apologize my excuses simply that I lost track of time. So thank you for speaking. Well, thank you for having me here today. Oh, hello, okay. Um, so thank you for having me. My first update is that both the boys hockey team and girls hockey team won their Patriot League title. And unfortunately, the boys hockey team made it to the semifinals round of the tournament. And they got knocked out by Masslet last night, but they both had terrific seasons and were very fun to watch. And also congratulations to wrestling coach Sean Petrusino, her being inducted to the Massachusetts Hall of Fame on March 1st. And Principal LaRanger presented Coach Petrusino's award before the All-State Wrestling Finals where Liam Holden competed. Furthermore, congratulations to Willis Ames for being selected as the 2025 MSSA scholar athlete essay award winner. His dedication to both academics and athletics truly set him apart. And his recognition is a testament of his hard work, character and commitment to excellence. Willis will represent Massachusetts in the Section 1 selection process for the National Institute Athletic Association Scholar Athlete of the New Year Award. Furthermore, during February break night, Situate high school students and two teachers embarked on an unforgettable trip to China, visiting three cities, which include Shanghai and Shanghai. And this journey to China was more of a, was more than just a sightseeing tour. They truly immersed themselves in the culture and were able to practice their Chinese. And also right now, the Mala UN trip is in Switzerland, in Paris, thanks to your approval. Furthermore, more data on our wind block survey, 10th, 11th and 12th go to shared input. And 79.9% of students think that wind block is useful. And 98.1% of students think wind blocks should be longer. So that is the 39 minute break we have before the last block today. And I know they've talked about making some changes. Then we also have a student voice. This will actually be helpful for the new elementary architect. I know he's still here, but junior Shay Neri wrote a letter to the building committee regarding food allergies and adding more sinks to the new elementary school. She wrote, as you plan for your new elementary school, Situate, I urge you to consider students with food allergies and include more sinks and opportunities for hand washing in the cafeteria and classrooms. This will reduce cross contaminations and limit contact, contact, contact reactions that food allergic individuals experience. And this actually states that the elementary school will have more sinks installed. So I thought that advice was taken. And furthermore, congratulations to Jalen May Stevens for organizing a Black History Month celebration on Thursday, February 27th. The event was great and she did a great job planning everything and it was overall a great time. And lastly, currently the, during wind block on March 3rd, students have received an introduction to the course selection process for next year. And they will have until March 17th to make course selections in their Aspen portal for next year. So that is all I have for you guys today. Any questions?
Thank you.
I have one quick question, sorry. I was just curious if it would ever be possible to get, it's like you reached off something typed. Would you be able to get a copy of that? I ask only because when I was doing the updates this morning, Jane has much more specific information than what we have. Like I was like, I got a shout out to robotics team. And I'm like looking on Instagram this morning to try to find like what to say. And like I wanted to, you know, share about the play, but similarly, I was kind of like, I know I'm missing things, you know? And I just feel like they have, so I don't know if the timing would work because we do it Monday mornings and we do it every Monday. So it wouldn't always work, but I just feel like even the stuff that you just said, like, I was like, oh, I missed the Mala UN trip and the trip to China. Like stuff like that, I just think it's like part of what we're trying to do with these updates. So I don't know, just a, you know, thought of it.
I'm happy to email this to someone and Mr. LaRanger ends up and I kind of add the little things and.
Yeah, I mean, if someone's already writing it, it just kind of feels like it might serve more purposes.
As long as it's uploaded on the.
Somewhere.
If you, if you want me to email it to one of you or upload it somewhere.
I should go to Sarah's. I should go to Sarah's, it used to go in our back, it used to go in our backup.
Oh, okay. Okay, so.
Yeah, if it could go in the backup, that'd actually be the best way.
But when, when do you get it, Monday or Friday?
Usually by Friday.
Yeah, that would work.
If you want to send it to Ms. Sterling, we can send it to the, to our school committee, whoever gets it.
Send it to you.
Sarah, Sarah Sterling.
On that kind of note, on, on that kind of note that Maria said, I think I was reading somewhere, we get all those sub stack, I think all those old rebounds or whatever. I was reading, I know because we, we voted that Mala UN trip. And I know it wasn't controversial, but it was, we had a lot of good discussion. Is there a way you think that we can get a calendar of all of our field trips, just so we can kind of see them? I think it's a great thing to communicate too, as you said, really.
Yeah, I wanted to share it.
Because I think we vote on them, but I don't remember what they are.
Galapagos or something.
Galapagos is coming up very soon.
I keep a close watch on that.
You do? Like I think it'd be cool to have a visual of like all the different field trips that either we approve or even the ones that, like the in-state ones that we don't, just so we have an idea. Like everyone has an idea of what's all these other opportunities that kids are getting. You can do that?
That'd be, that'd be great.
Yeah, thank you.
It'll help Ms. Sterling reach out to you so you don't have to worry about it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You get along? LaRanger, Mark emails it there, so he can just email to Sarah.
Yeah, Mark could just email Sarah. You don't have to be involved, Jane.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I apologize again for that. Thank you so much.
Right, Dr. Rab, these FY25 budget transfers.
Thank you, Madam Chair, just give me one moment. I draw the committee's attention to the blue memo as we did last year. There have been a lot of changes in terms of, you know, hiring, replacement, placing retirements. Any changes that we've done, basically since last March, I've reflected in the FY25 budget. And there's two reasons I do this. One, to make it accurate for the current situation, but also so it's an easy comparison to the budget book in FY26. So these are the numbers that I jump off of 25 into 26 into the budget book, which I just finished today and should be out next week. So we'll be able to have that printed pretty soon and out and about in the community. So this year going in 25, there aren't a whole lot of changes. Most of them you'll see are contract settlements, whether they be individual contracts that have been settled over the last year or, you know, just as part of a regular collective bargaining agreement. So there's nothing that really jumps off the page in terms of how things move around. But the bottom line is, and I can certainly answer questions on any particular line, but the bottom line, not to be dizzying about it, although there are five pages to the presentation. Well, if you go online and you look at the, the presentation, the last line keeps it at the same $47.4 million. So that hasn't changed clearly. And, and the big areas clearly that you see changes are, are in, you know, the teacher lines, the paraprofessional lines. We're always keeping current with the needs of students on IEPs. And so that's primarily drives any special education changes. So again, I'm happy to answer any questions, but basically we're keeping the number the same and we're making this the most accurate comparison as we move forward to FY26. And I would appreciate a formal vote, just so I can put it in the book. And this is the same format that's in the budget book. So anybody looking at it, it's the same exact format, just to the next.
So thanks very much for this. Again, I think we say this every show up, but we've never really had this level of detail, so this is great. Can you just confirm it? Do you anticipate there to be any more changes by the end of this fiscal year? This, this will take care of it? Because we only have, what, April, May, three more months? Thank you.
Everything looks consistent, it means it's the same. Anyone else question? Not, we'll take a vote on these budget transfers.
Did I make a motion that the school committee votes to approve the FY25 budget transfers as presented? Twelve second. All in favor? Thank you. All right. All right, Mr. Newton with our science department updates and presentation, teaching from today.
Good evening, thanks for having me in. All right, because Jane is everywhere, she does appear in a photo in here, so. All right, so just kind of teaching and learning updates in the world of gates and high school, science, tech and engineering. Lots of stuff going on, as there should be. I'm pointing out and starting with this because this is just kind of what I very, very, very firmly believe when it comes to teaching and learning in science and engineering, is that it's active, it's what we do. You know, folks that have been on the committee for a while have heard me say in the past, like, science is a verb, it is a thing that we do. It is not just memorizing a series of definitions and so on and so forth. So I do love every time I get to go into a classroom and see things like we see in these images of kids doing stuff, of kids figuring stuff out, of problem solving, of all these bigger, better things than just, and I say this as a career biology teacher, memorizing the equation for photosynthesis, which I have taught more times than I could count. So exciting stuff that of course is happening and going on within the department. We are helping sort of pave the way with our environmental stewardship pathway. This is one of our DESI recognized ICPs, Innovation Career Pathways. We are still very, very new, we're about a year, maybe two behind the business pathway in terms of implementation. So we are looking to grow, we are actively growing at the moment. I get one or two inquiries, you know, every day or two at this point from students, just looking for information, whether they're. I get one or two inquiries, you know, every day or two at this point from students, just looking for information, whether they join or not is to be determined. But word is getting out there, which is great. We are expecting five students, including Jane, to complete the pathway this year. As we are in the process of students registering for classes for next year, this is where that like recruiting and, and buildup is coming from. I think that's the logical time and place to do that. Another student made some very, very nice artwork that has, draws kids' attention with a QR code that they can scan and, and get the information they need, which is awesome as part of the pathway. And this is kind of how DESI designs ICPs. Students need to complete two technical courses. Those are currently our ninth grade bio and tenth grade chem classes. So an easy way in, as all of our students are currently taking those classes in ninth and tenth grades. They then need eight additional credits in STEM from a menu of options. But it's a fairly wide menu of different science and math and engineering courses, so everyone can find their way in. The real differentiator, as it is with the business class, is that one hundred hour internship or capstone. But we've been working with some community partners to offer ways for kids to do that. So shifting gears a little bit, just kind of where we are, what we're working on, how we're looking to get better. This is our eighth grade STE MCAS performance. I will remind you, as I do every year, that this is a unique middle school test because it covers sixth, seventh and eighth grade standards in one test, whereas math and ELA have separate tests each year for those. You can see we have been remarkably consistent. What we are currently looking at and for, as we go ahead, DESI has proposed some pretty significant changes to the test itself. We, along with everybody else across the Commonwealth, will be piloting those changes this year. I recently saw we will be piloting again next year when they originally said we would be on the new test at that point. But the new test is, in my opinion, awesome in that it is far more practice and doing based, right? Exactly what I opened with. So we have teachers working on that with those, having students try the three modules that DESI has put out there as samples already. And we're getting there. As such, we're working on how do we teach and assess these practices along the way so that students are getting feedback and we're getting them better prepared. And the curriculum materials that we purchased now two years ago are better aligned to this. They require a lot more of this doing and practices. So we continue to monitor the implementation in those situations. High school, happy to say, we've, in my opinion, moved forward quite a bit here in the last couple of years. We see an improvement in the number of students that are scoring in that exceeding expectations range. We see that that is for the most part happening at the expense of reducing the number of students in the partially meeting expectations range, which is really one of the two places we'd like to see that coming from. So we continue, again, PD and monitoring and all the same things, because we're doing that as a department related to practices and getting better in that realm. One thing that we need to spend some more time working on is embedding student supports for students with disabilities. This was an area when we looked at our high school data. We weren't necessarily happy with what we were seeing as results there. Thankfully, this aligns with MTSS and, and some of the other initiatives that are going on around the building and district. AP exams. What you're looking at here is just the number of exams taken each year from the last couple of years, only going back to the year that it got really weird because kids took the test at home and they only lasted an hour. The big difference, of course, is the addition of AP Environmental Science that now happened for twenty twenty-three. So the two pieces of good news that I take from that was more kids got access to advanced coursework because we see more students accessing AP level science classes. And the concern or question at the time was would students elect to take that instead of our other existing AP offerings? And they're not doing so in large numbers. We're still seeing fairly consistent participation and AP Biology is where we questioned if we would lose the most students. We just really haven't. So we are also doing a little, some preliminary work on exploring course sequencing to see how we can make sure students are getting prepared for these, accessing these courses. The addition of Project Lead the Way increases some flexibility there also, which we've talked about. So we're hoping to get even more students into some of these advanced courses and getting the benefit. The results we're seeing, bio is killing it. I mean, just to say that out loud, it's unbelievable. I think it was a ninety-three percent pass rate, pass being defined by a three or better on the exam. You can see there's some areas where we got to relook at what we're doing, which we're starting to do, we've been doing. AP Physics One, we saw a good jump there in twenty twenty-three and unfortunately a little bit of regression in twenty twenty-four. You know, in doing so, we've looked back, we've identified one or two curricular areas, specifically circular rotational motion, that we got to take a look at how we're teaching and how we're assessing. We're doing a lot of work on making sure that student practice problems are better aligned to the types and expectations of problems students are going to see on the exam. Again, getting ready, speaking the language all year long, so it's not different when you get there. To throw us for a loop, however, college board decided they needed to add a topic to AP Physics One, which is fluids. So while we're looking back at that work, we're also looking at how are we including that this year and going forward as we sort of prepare for that. So I've talked a lot of what we're working on, but here's a lengthy list. This is way too many words on a slide for me. But implementing curriculum, addressing PD needs related to that implementation and the way that I firmly believe we should be teaching and assessing, which again is students are doing and problem solving and figuring things out, asking questions. We are aligning our understanding of teaching to these, what they call SEP, science and engineering practices. They're listed in the frameworks. They run six through twelve. They're the things you would expect. We're implementing more Project Lead the Way. We know we've got Intro Engineering Design running this year. That seems to be going great. We're expecting Principles of Engineering added for next year, which will also be great. We're also looking at adding an environmental sustainability Project Lead the Way class. I'm teaching a Project Lead the Way class on Intro to Biomedical Science, which I'm having a blast with. So all that is going well. We're looking to continue growing relationships with some of the community partners we do work with already. Center for Student Go to Research out of Cohasset, North South River Watershed Association, who's in here all the time, all of a sudden. Friends of Holly Hill Farm up in Cohasset. And we're of course looking to find new partners and continue to find new opportunities for our kiddos. And while all of that's going on, we're still looking at Gates Engineering and DLCS. DLCS is Digital Literacy and Computer Science at Gates and refining curricula there. And again, making sure our kiddos are getting the biggest, best, most inclusive experience we can provide them. We're looking to complete over the course of, say, next year for the most part, starting now, so some of it's this year. Refining these common assessments in all our courses, again, looking to make sure those practices and that we're better aligned and that we have consistent ways of rating student work in those areas, providing consistent feedback so that students are aware of how they're progressing, six through twelve, as they work on this skillset. We are preparing for this. They're calling it the innovative assessment pilot for the new, it's actually fifth and eighth grade, but I started in sixth grade, so MCAS that will work on in Gates, they'll regret that name when they go to change it again in the future. Building in more of these Project Lead the Way classes. And what really feels important is finding better ways to show off all this awesome stuff that our kids do, that our teachers do, that they do together, and so on and so forth. So. That's my very speed through updates of STE six through twelve.
So going back to the AP exams, you have identified exactly where that did, like what caused that?
Yes, unfortunately, we saw a big time change. We do get data back from the college board that breaks everything down into a handful of different categories and in a couple of different ways. We could see where we were trailing both the state and national students curricular wise. Again, at the moment, the, the focus is on rotational and circular motion, which actually is probably the most complex part of that course at this point. It's a lot of variables involved when you have to do those problems. But that seems to be, again, statistically and data wise, our biggest area for improvement or need improvement.
Thanks for this. This is great. I have a couple of questions. Can you help me understand the course sequencing as the biology AP, is that a second biology course? Is that a freshman course?
That is a second year of biology. The majority of students that enroll in that course are in the eleventh grade, with some seniors also. So currently, all of our ninth grade students take biology at either the CP or honors level. All of our sophomores take chemistry at one of the CP honors or AP levels. And then for the eleventh grade, the umbrella opens up and there are tons and tons of options and choices for kids in a fairly wide variety of subject areas within the heading of science and engineering. AP Bio is one of them. AP Physics is one of them. All levels of physics would be on that list. AP Environmental.
Is the, I'm just curious the difference between freshman and then the AP Bio? Is it for kids who think they want to go into field of medicine or is it just further? Is it totally different from original ninth grade bio?
It is not completely different. It is in considerably more depth and detail. So much of biology is basically an application of chemistry. And in the ninth grade, the kiddos haven't seen chemistry yet. So so much of what we teach in the ninth grade is in this proverbial black box of like this just happens. They get chemistry and they get two further years along in their math education. And now they can come back and the chemistry and the math can all be there. So there is considerably more detail and depth in AP than there is in CP honors.
Thank you. That's helpful. I don't think I, I don't think I knew that.
Yeah, I was gonna, that was one of my comments, actually, as a parent registering a junior, and we said the umbrella opens. It was a pleasant problem to have with what to choose. My son was like, I feel like that principles of biomedical, that looks, it was just intriguing. If you have a child who's interested in anything medical, even just that they, anything in this massive umbrella, which lane to choose was a good problem, at least in my house to have. And there were more options too, but that was a really, there was, and then Project Lead the Way components. Like it was just, I just feel like that your department is doing a great job with offering that to, once you get to that upper level selection moment.
And we have a lot of different kids with a lot of different interests and a lot of different skillsets and a lot of different paths that they desire to follow. And again, to come back to what I've now said four or five times already, it's about that skillset that's built into the practices. And whether you're practicing it in physics or biology or environmental shouldn't really matter. If you're developing those skillsets related to analyzing data and arguing from evidence in planning investigations, those are all the same regardless of the science content that's being used to get you there.
Yeah, that definitely comes through, came through at least. Yeah, that was good.
First of all, I wanted to say thank you so much for the presentation. I think it was really helpful to have like the historical data just made it, I think, much easier to digest, like where we are currently, seeing where we've been, so thank you so much for that. I have a question about Project Lead the Way. So I don't quite understand, is that a curriculum or is it a PD? And like, do, is it a subscription? Like how, can you just kind of talk a little bit about that? Because it seems like that's working well. I kind of want to know.
The short answer is yes. It is, it is a fairly diverse and large organization at this point. That, I don't know if this is actually a one hundred percent true statement, but the easiest way for me to describe it to folks is in some ways it's a competitor to college board and AP. So what they do is create courses. At the moment, they are all STEM related courses. But they create these courses with curricula, with resources vetted, kind of ready to go. They offer training to teachers in how to deliver that curriculum and run those projects. They are very, very project driven. For example, in the class I am teaching this year, which is the biomedical science, we do not have tests. Every unit ends with a project. And it's a different project every time, so it stays a little fresher. I just listened to student recorded podcasts explaining a disease outbreak. Too soon, I know. And, but they were great. Kids dive into it. They really enjoy that. And so it is all of those things. Combined with the reason I say it's sort of a competitor to college board AP is there is an opportunity for students to earn college credit at the end of the course by meeting a handful of fairly clearly defined criteria.
So do we purchase it, like, we own it now? Because it was originally grant funded, right? Or is it like a subscription that you kind of pay annually to kind of stay current?
So we do have to pay a membership fee to continue our access to all of those curricular instructional materials.
And what percentage of science courses are sort of relying on Project Lead the Way right now? Is it a small?
At the moment, it's small. So we are running two courses this year, looking to expand it to four for next year.
Okay, so we've got Project Lead the Way, we've got AP, and we've got some others. And so in the others that are not either of those, what is your curriculum looking like in those? Is that teacher created or are you?
Generally speaking, yes. The one that stands out is going to be our honors anatomy class, which is a fairly standard anatomy physiology class. Teacher does a fantastic job and has for years. And kids love it even though it's challenging, which is the really sign that the teacher's doing a great job in there. But I would say that is, yeah, kind of, you know, yes, we provide curricular instructional materials, but that particular teacher has for the most part developed that curriculum over time.
So when you were talking about the common assessments, if it's not AP and it's not Project Lead the Way, those are something that teachers say would collaborate to build?
That's correct.
And give their kids and they come back and just set up with the data together.
That's correct. I'll give you one example. As we just passed mid-years, the ninth grade biology teachers create an exam to give as the mid-year that's made up of old MCAS questions that are publicly available so that they can A mimic that experience for students, but also then hopefully be able to identify, ooh, maybe we didn't do so great in this area. Let's make sure we revisit it, so on.
Great, thank you.
No, this is, this is great. I guess I love the opportunity. I know that one of our, part of our strategic goal is to include community and that sort of thing. I'm curious, do we have any classes or programs that involve the ocean? Like do we have an oceanography class or do we have a way to? I know that Stellwagen Bank is a big, I mean, it's one of the largest natural resource or whatever it is, just offshore. Like I'm curious what kind of offerings or opportunities are up for that, either for internship or some working together.
So we do currently offer a semester long oceanography course. And we'll find overlap with all of our different environmental, whether it take the environmental or hopefully next year, the environmental sustainability Project Lead the Way class. Clearly, there's going to be ocean aspects to those courses. We have students that do projects. You mentioned internship. I would argue it's more like capstone than internship, but that are able to get some experience out there. One of the photos I showed, the one that has Jane in it. We had four students this past fall and this is them at their ceremony, for lack of a better term, where they were granted their certificate by NOAA. So, you know, government agency through Stellwagen Bank, they call it their stream to sanctuary certificate. And this is basically for completing an independent research project that is somehow built around connecting these watersheds that we experience where we live and how they are, how changes or human impact on those are impacting Stellwagen Bank, you know, off our coast.
That's great. Thank you.
I could just add that there's a little bit of an overlap too with the innovation career pathway. So on this slide, it talks about the hundred hour internship, so, you know, Patrick.
So, you know, Patrick, Greg Raniere, Kay Chula, all have on their radar that, thinking about ways for students on the pathways that we have to really, to highlight the internship component. So that goes back to developing our relationships with, and community partnerships. So we spent some time with the Holly Hill Partnership. And if students are going to do these 100-hour internships, we recognize that we really need to build, make it easier for them to get connected to the community. So that's part of our work too with these pathways. It's just having students communicate what they're interested in and then having us have existing relationships and being where we are geographically. It would be really nice if we could have partners who are, you know, doing really good work related to the ocean and our stream. So, you know, that's definitely on Patrick's radar in terms of the intersection of the coursework and our Innovation Career Pathway. So it's really exciting.
Good.
Thank you. There's the Lobsturman's Association down in Harbor. Toby Norton, he's part of that. It's right up on Allen Group. But no, I mean, they work a lot with the state and the regulations.
Absolutely, they're a group to talk to.
Yeah. It's awesome. Thank you. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Rapp.
Thank you. I'm very pleased to announce a donation. In Kelly Bell, our district nurse leader, has a relationship with Convenient MD through their school nurse partnership program. And they donated free, 20 free youth physical vouchers to our school. They're worth $50 each, so a $1,000 donation in kind. And they've delivered those to her and they'll be distributed to families of these students. And she shall work together with the principals. But we're really pleased to, to receive that. And it gives anybody a free physical. Twenty.
Right, I'll take a motion on that. And next donation.
I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the 23 youth physical vouchers from Convenient MD as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have some minutes approved from February 10th. Questions on those or? Glorious names. Take a motion on those minutes.
I made a motion that the school committee vote to approve the February 10th, 2025 minutes as presented.
A second.
Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Now the warrants in the backup tonight.
What else I do have for you to read it to?
Yes.
With your permission.
Sure.
From February 13th, 2025, for $471,046.86. From February 27th, 2025, for $745,017.48. And from last week, March 6th, $133,736.09.
Thank you. Any correspondences I'm not aware of? Other business or future agenda items?
Oh, it is, okay. So Maria and I met, what was it, a week ago, Maria?
Yeah.
I totally lost. A week ago to talk about the data subcommittee, because it's part of our goal. And so we were hoping to get on the agenda.
Okay.
The, you know, the next couple to present sort of what, how we think our, what our approach should be and to get some opportunities to discuss and get feedback from everybody.
It might be wise to actually check in on our goals in general.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, good idea. Anything else? No, all right, take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at 7:15.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.